Carlos Planning Commission, March 20th, 2017 meeting to order. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Bradley?
Here.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Present.
Commissioner Harper Pedersen is out this evening. Vice Chair Silverman?
Present.
Chair Bergman?
Present. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the public comment. But prior to the public comment, I want to make an announcement about item B on, Lisa, you can speak to that, item B on the public hearing. Do you want to make a statement about that?
Yes, Chair Bergman. The Planning Division received a written notice from the applicant for 26 El Camino Real, which is the proposed hotel expansion at Hotel San Carlos, and they have requested that the Planning Commission continue the item to a date certain, and they're asking to be agendized on April the 17th.
Okay.
So I would need a motion and a second to continue the item to a date certain.
No move.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
And Chair Bergman?
Yes. Okay. Knowing that if there's anyone here, we're going to go into public comment, and so you are more than welcome to speak about that item during public comment since it is being agendized to the 17th. So, public comment is limited to items that are not on the agenda, which we just discussed. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak? And of course, we encourage you to come to the 417 meeting as well if you're here for that item, but you can speak on it today, too.
Well, thanks for letting me speak. I am here to speak about the project that is proposed for 26 El Camino Real, the hotel expansion. And in principle, well, my name's Rob McNeil. I live at 1 Laurel Street, which is directly adjacent. My condominium is going to be within 20 feet of this new development. And in principle, I'm not opposed to the expansion. I think it could be good for the neighborhood. But what I am opposed to is the height, proposed height, and just size of the whole development. As it's planned, as a four-story development, the top floor will 100% block our windows, our deck, that our windows on the southeast side look out onto the hills across the bay from Oakland to San Jose. They're expansive views. It's also the main source of light into our condominium. And my understanding is that, you know, as citizens, we have a right, that it's a public nuisance, basically, if a new development goes in and blocks our light. There's lots of factors that we're concerned about, that the city planner has been working on this for a year, and we were just notified on the 11th of this month and only given access to the plans on the 16th, which was a day before our weekend. You know, how are we supposed to mount a response? We're lucky we got any comment in. So we had a meeting with the city planner this morning, and we're able to get this off the agenda so that we can try and work with the developer more. I'm hoping that we can come to some sort of an arrangement, you know, before the permitting meeting on the 17th. And if they're not willing to compromise, we're going to pursue legal action to stop or make them change the plan. I just wanted to also say that I think the city should consider people who've been living in this building and surrounding buildings for decades. Myself and my wife have lived in this condominium for 15 years. Our neighbor Judy, who's also directly affected, has been living there for 20 years. The city of good living should be concerned about the people who live in the city of San Carlos.
What's the address of the condominium again?
1 Laurel Street.
1 Laurel.
And it's Spring Valley Condominiums. So we have multiple addresses. We have 1 Laurel, 1 Elm, 2 Elm. So we're just, you know, we think that maximum consideration should be given to citizens of the city, not to temporary residents at a hotel, you know, at our expense. And I, you know, humbly thank you for listening to this, and I hope you take it into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Please, again, it's continued to the 17th, and we encourage you to come to that meeting as well, too, to speak. Is there anyone else that wants to speak as part of a public comment today? Okay.
No, I will.
Please, come on.
Hi, my name is Ellen Lutrell. I live at 160 Laurel. And the reason I'm here today is to really complain about the workers. I'm not seeing that this is actually creating local jobs. I live between Oak and Hall, and there's a big development right there, the Deacon on El Camino and Holly. I'm complaining about, once a week to the police, about non-locals parking on our street and taking our parking spots. Workers are actually changing in the afternoon after working down to their skivvies and no shirt to change in their clothes to go home. So it's, aside from the building issues, it's actually creating, I think, a sense of decency in our community. They're constantly illegally parking. I'm on record, like, I'm on first-name basis sometimes with some of these policemen, and I'm constantly calling to complain. And so, again, I just found out about this, and I'm going to go back and read all the documents, but this is not creating local jobs. People are staying at the hotel and parking on our street, so they're not even paying for parking at the hotel, and they're just not respecting the local citizens. And there's kids all around my neighborhood.
What's your address again?
160 Laurel Street. And so I'm just concerned about just our own sense of decency and the communities that this is bringing in terms of workers. So.
And what, since obviously the hotel hasn't started yet, so you're talking about...
But I'm one block from the hotel.
One block.
And so workers will be parking on our street because on that east side facing Laurel, it's unlimited parking.
I wanted to know what was being done right now that's causing the immediate problem.
Again, the property on El Camino and Holly. And I've spoken to the city contractor, this woman who is part of the building. I forget her name. I have it in my notes, but I didn't bring it with me tonight.
Okay, so Lisa, is there any way we can check on what the conditions are for that parking? And is there any...
Yes, it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to speak too much, but it sounds like you're working with Dolores Montenegro, who has been hired by the city to oversee all of the different construction projects that are currently underway.
Right.
And I know that there was a gentleman who reached out to her about similar issues related to parking, so that's currently being addressed. And the construction manager for the transit village has been notified of the issue. If there continues to be concerns, please continue to work with Dolores on that.
It's been great, but again, my point is, with the new hotel going up, this is going to cause the same problem again, and it's not creating local jobs. All of these folks drive in, I see them park on a Sunday night, they go to the hotel, and they leave on a Friday afternoon.
I understand, but I want to make sure that your community is decent, right, regardless of who's there. So, and I would encourage you to come again with this on the 17th if you want to speak about it again. But it's, obviously, you made notice here on the record, and I appreciate that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on public comment? Please.
My name's Judy Nishama. I live at 1 Laurel. I've lived there for 20-plus years. Just to reiterate what the nice folks have said, and as far as safety, traffic, hotel management, et cetera, I second everything they've said. When we found out about this on the 11th via U.S. mail, I immediately called here because Lisa Costa Sanders' name was on there, so I called, and she kindly set up a meeting for me, for us to meet this morning, and that's why this item was pulled off of the agenda. I mean, I'm sure that she then called the management and said, you know, "We have some upset people, you know, this is probably a good idea," whatever. And we're very grateful that that happened because we've been kind of, you know, on-call all weekend, like, "Oh, my gosh, how are we going to handle this?" My unit and Rob's unit are next to each other, and we both face that southeast vista, and that is what gives our properties, even though they're condominiums, it gives them more value than without, than if they're looking at the top of a hotel with, you know, air conditioners and whatever up there, and walls, which we don't have now. So, I mean, I'm sure, we don't have a problem with a new hotel. It's getting kind of seedy, and we have, for many years, I've tried to get our condominium association and the San Carlos Hotel, and it was called something else before, maybe it was a Days Inn. I'm not sure. But anyway, tried to get them to work because the back and the side of the building is a constant mess, and there was a big garbage thing out there, and there's, you know, while they were remodeling the last time, you know, all of the furniture and the beds and stuff were left out there. I've picked up trash out there multiple times, multiple, multiple times, because I live there. I've also called the police about people parking in our area. We've had more thefts just this morning. There was the 1 Elm unit, which is right across the street, was broken into, not connection to the hotel, but overall, the neighborhood needs to be, the integrity of the neighborhood for families needs to be protected. And I, too, feel like somebody's going to come and stay in this four-story hotel. I live there every day. I don't have a lot of money to vacation. I look at that view. I cherish it. That's my little nest and has been for me and my daughter. And then somebody who's coming to visit town for a couple of days and is probably going to go over to Redwood Chores or wherever all day anyway, gets to appreciate the view, and I live there and pay taxes and clean up the trash, and I don't get to enjoy the view. It's a very hard scenario. And I will have to say that when I called Lisa on, I forget now if it was Thursday or Friday, actually, one of those two days, anyway, within like five minutes, the manager of the hotel had called me. She shared my information. He called me and said he wanted to reach out to the neighborhood, and what concerns did I have? After planning this for a whole year, I mean, and then I don't feel like it's him wanting to make the outreach, it's us insisting on that outreach. So I rest my case, but you guys are wonderful, and we are really, really concerned about having 150 new neighbors. It's like 75 more units, let's say, two people. If it's full, it's 150 new neighbors that are going to be constantly changing, and it's really intimidating and not conducive to the city of good living, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak from public comment? Okay, I don't think there's anything to close. I don't think. No, no, we're...
Yeah, but I just note, you know, I'd like to see when we see this project on April 17th, the development drawn in relation to some of the neighboring buildings. Just looking at it, it's not apparent to me how it could block a view since it's 60 or 70 feet down slope from Laurel, so I'm going to want to have a better sense of what it actually looks like.
Pass that on to the applicant.
Yeah, I was very surprised. I didn't see more public comment when I saw this come across our desk, because usually we get all kinds of sheets of public comments for stuff like this, so I was so surprised we didn't see it. So I'm glad that they've come today and will be on the 17th, so, thank you.
Can we suggest a light study as well?
Like a shade study?
Shade study, yeah.
Okay. All right, so, all right. We don't close public comment, is that what you said?
No, there's nothing. This was just public comment. All right, we're good to go.
All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I didn't see any.
American movement?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
I'm going to stay since I was not here for that meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the public hearing. The procedure for a public hearing is the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendation. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice. The public notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. So, the first item on the agenda is 116 Wilshire Court, APN 050-261-460. Consideration of a grading and dirt haul certificate to allow for the grading associated with the construction of two new homes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jill Lewis, and I will present to you the request for approval of a grading and dirt haul certificate for two previously approved homes at 116 Wilshire Court. The project site contains two legal lots, so that means that no subdivision was required. The subject lots measure 5,637 square feet and 6,615 square feet in area, respectively. The zoning is RS6, single-family residential, and the general plan land use designation is single-family. Planning Commission approval is required for grading over 1,000 cubic yards. The RDRC approved the two new homes with conditions on August 1st, 2016. At that time, total grading quantities were forecast to be 945 cubic yards. To address neighborhood concerns involving building height, the houses were sunk deeper into the hillside. As a result, the grading quantities had to increase by 205 cubic yards to a total of 1,150 cubic yards. So as I mentioned, the total grading is 1,150 cubic yards. For empty trucks going to the site, they will come 84 West to U.S. Highway 101 North, exit Whipple Avenue, turn left onto, let's see, sorry, turn left onto Whipple Avenue, right onto El Camino Real, left onto Britton Avenue, right onto Sunset Drive, left onto Wilshire Court. For full trucks leaving the site, right onto Sunset Drive, left onto Britton Avenue, U.S. Highway 101 South to the Dumbarton Bridge. The anticipated haul location are the Fremont Baylands, and the approximate number of trucks daily, sorry, not daily, was 66 hauling dirt from the site. And this is the dirt haul route. So this is the formal motion, should you choose to approve this request. I'm available for any questions you have for staff, and the project team is also here as well.
Any questions for staff at this time? No? Okay. Does the applicant wish to make any statement?
Sure.
Okay.
My name is Joe Revella. I will be the, I'm the owner, and I will be the Revella. And Dylan is here from DMG Engineering, the civil engineer, if you guys have any questions that I'm not able to answer. But Jill kind of covered it. We worked a couple of years, three different RDRC meetings with the owners and trying to get the houses to do a couple of different things. One, get them down low enough so the neighbor on the left's views wouldn't be blocked. The ridges had to be dropped, so we dropped the houses about four feet and probably more than we actually wanted to, anticipated in the beginning. And secondly, to give it more of an appearance of a one-story house from the street, not too big, bulky houses sitting up on top of the hill. So that's kind of why they ended up being, and, you know, the grading ended up being what it was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
I just have a question.
Please, come on. They can't, it's me is required, and we can't hear it when you're out in the audience. I'm asking you to come up.
So the route that was explained is how the big trucks will come in and how they will leave.
Can you just...
That street is very narrow, okay? And so you're going to have to instruct...
Can you address us instead of them directly? It's better if you address the planning commission. I know, it's formality.
They're going to have to be, the truck drivers are going to have to be instructed because the street is very narrow.
Yeah.
And we have a lot of elderly people that live in this street. We have sometimes fire trucks and ambulances called, and so you can't block the street. And at the same time, there are kids there, and there is a cul-de-sac up at the top of the hill. They're going to have to come, turn around, and come down the hill instead of backing up, because it's really dangerous to back those big trucks down around, and, you know, because there's a lot of traffic on Sunset, too, and now even more traffic. So that's one question. Can that be part of the route that you've explained?
Can you speak to that, Lisa, or Jill?
Yes. The city's Public Works Engineering Division did review the grading and dirt haul certificate and proposed dirt haul route that the applicant provided, and they had no objections with it. And as part of our standard procedures for grading and dirt haul certificates and requirements that will be imposed upon the applicant is that prior to getting their grading permit from Public Works, so again, the first step is getting their certificate approved by the Planning Commission, and then the applicant will move forward and continue working with engineering to actually get their grading permit. And prior to getting their grading permit, they're required to submit a traffic control plan to the satisfaction of the Public Works Department. And in addition, they're also required to have two trained flag persons for traffic control during the entire grading and dirt hauling operation.
Okay, thank you. Is that helpful, though?
That's helpful. And in addition, unfortunately, I have, my house is on the actual corner, and I have a very big driveway that's a real temptation for a lot of the workers to come in and turn around and use it. And I've already, I'm afraid it's going to get broken because some of those trucks are pretty heavy and already had...
So I would really encourage you to take pictures before all this starts.
Like some cones from the builder. You guys have got cones, right? Just so we can control the traffic and keep them off. That's all. We have to control it, that's all. I...
Well, we hear these type of things many times, and even, probably even on this street before. And what we always recommend when we know we're going to have heavy equipment going up and down these roads is that people take pictures before they start and then after it's finished, so there's a document of what things looked at. So if it ever came down to it, you have to be able to show how it was before things started. So I'm just, I'm just...
We can have a, I mean, honestly, they can't use your driveway. We can have a condition that they not use your driveway.
Yeah, because, you know, like the...
Do you object to not using her driveway? Okay, we're going to have a condition...
I know, I know that he'll agree to this. I just have to state it, so it's...
And we'll add it as a condition. You can't use your driveway.
Yeah, that's all.
And if you see a worker use your driveway, call the city. They'll be in violation of their dirt haul certificate.
It's very spontaneous, the way they do this, because I know even, like, the trucks that are hauling all the stuff for the pipe renovation and all the digging that's been going on, this huge truck turned in, turned into Wilshire, and turned in my driveway because he had turned in the wrong place. And this is a double, turned in my driveway, and then he was gone. I'm like, and these are, you know, people that are working for PG&E.
Sure. What's your address?
108 Wilshire Court. So just, if you just put cones to keep them out, that's all.
108 Sunset or 108 Wilshire?
108 Wilshire. I'm looking at it.
Okay.
Wilshire.
And in addition, through the chair, the applicant is also required to post a bond for any damage that is done to the streets. So that's condition number 13. So the items that were just, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, but of the concerns that you just raised, conditions 13, 14, and 16 within the grading and dirt haul certificate would address those.
Thank you. Okay. So it sounds like we want to make some additions to the conditions?
Yeah, not a problem.
Okay. All right. Anyone else want, wish to speak about this item? No? Okay, I don't think any motion to close the public comment.
No.
Just a second.
I saw other people from the community, they're just here out of curiosity, or, you know, you don't want to speak.
I don't want to.
I mean, I don't want to, I just, I know you're the neighbor, so.
Hi, I'm Melissa Riofoyo. I'm from 132 Wilshire Court on the other side. And we did, you know, receive notification about this, and I think the only thing is that I think I misread. I thought the trucks were going to stay on Sunset, which I thought, oh, that makes sense, and then they won't have to go up our little cart. But I understand that's been reviewed. I mean, they're taking out a lot of dirt. It's going to be a mess no matter where you do it, so I'm not going to dispute that. We're just...
I know you're not looking forward to this particular development.
No, but, you know, it's just, it's a process. We have a house that's being built right now on the other side of the street, and so we have a little taste about what we're going to get with two homes. It just is what it is. So, yeah, if I don't, so I assume that just being on Sunset was considered and rejected for whatever reason. That is a slightly wider street, but they can't turn around there, so it's probably... But that's, I just came to be an engaged citizen.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Second. Did you want to add any changes or modifications?
I do when I make the motion.
Yeah.
But I think we need to have a vote on the closing the public hearing.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes. Okay, any discussion? Or do you want to just make the motion?
I moved that the Planning Commission grant approval of the grading and dirt haul certificate to allow for the grading associated with two new homes at 116 Wilshire Court, APN 050-261-460, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report, and is conditioned in the grading and dirt haul certificate with two added conditions. One, that the permit specifically provide that the driveway at 108, and in fact, all of the driveways on the street may not be used by the trucks to turn around, and in addition, that the developer document the current state of the road, not the driveways, the current state of the road on Wilshire Court prior to beginning grading to the satisfaction of the city.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bradley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutierrez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Silverman?
Yes.
Chair Bergman?
Yes. Next thing on the agenda, reports, correspondence, and general information. Is there any report on recent City Council actions?
None from staff this evening.
Any Planning Commission comments or reports?
Yes, none.
Okay.
I'd like to report that I went to a meeting at 4 o'clock today here of the Citywide Wayfinding Committee, which was like Skype with the consultants in Pasadena.
Other than us?
Community Director Al Savay also attended, and we saw a lot of ideas for graphics on branding and the city of good living, and we'll be meeting again in about a month and hear more, and then eventually it'll come to us and, I'm sure, and to the City Council.
Thank you. Anything else?
Not me.
Okay. Planning staff comments, reports, and updates on current projects?
No updates. I think we kind of went through the agenda a little bit on some of the postponement of the two hotel projects that I've mentioned at previous hearings. I did want to update the Planning Commission with a little bit of progress that staff is making on the single-family house size, design scale, and neighborhood fit topic. We'll come up with a better way to describe that in the near future. But, you know, we're going to be having a multi-level public outreach process whereby we're going to be reaching out to the RDRC because they have, you know, the foremost authority over single-family design review. That's what they do. There are occasions where single-family homes will come before the Commission in the cases where there's over 1,000 cubic yards, or if they're asking for a variance or any other type of permit. But for the most part, those homes are going before the RDRC, so we want to start the process off by having a study session with them so we can hear their impressions, their concerns, and maybe they can point us to some areas of the code that they feel are important to review. So we will be having a study session with the RDRC next week on March 29th. We will be posting that on our website, but we're not widely posting that because that's really to hear from the RDRC. The public is welcome to attend. This is a public meeting. And then following the RDRC study session, we'll start having working meetings with the seven-member advisory committee. We're currently working with the city council to select those members. And just as a reminder, there will be four homeowners on that committee, one Realtor, one local builder developer, and one architect designer. So we'll have the majority of them be homeowners, but we'll want to get some feedback from the professionals that also work in that field as well. So we'll be, following RDRC, we'll start working with this advisory committee, hold community-wide meetings. They'll be, all of this will eventually be wrapped up and brought to the commission in study sessions and public hearing, and then ultimately to city council. So once we get the advisory committee members selected, we'll be able to pinpoint a more, develop a more, you know, detailed schedule as to when these meetings will occur. But I just wanted to give the commission with an update on the progress we've made to date. And that is all I have for this evening. Oh, there's just one other thing. The city, they wanted me to kind of spread the word. Let me see. So Earth Day cleanup is coming up on Saturday, April the 22nd. And it will be held from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Harrington Park. That's a small pocket park at 756 Laurel Street. So I imagine they'll be, you know, having, you know, everyone meet there. And so if anyone's interested in participating and helping do cleanup, which will be followed by treats, refreshments, and entertainment, they will need to register by April 7th to participate. And you would want to go to www.cityofsancarlos.org/earthday2017. And again, that's Saturday, April the 22nd, from 9:00 to noon.
What's the name of the park again?
Harrington Park.
Harrington?
The House from the B in May.
House from the B, okay. Thanks. Thank you. All right, anything else? Meeting adjourned.